We have a good number on Zoom. Thank you all for joining us. We're gonna start out by, by the beliefs. To the United States of America and to the Republic which sustains one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all. Do we have anyone in the audience or on Zoom who would like to make a public comment? Or something that isn't already on the agenda? Please probably be listening, so raise your hand on Zoom. Is this a full screen tip or is there more?
Uh, yes. Yeah, I'm not seeing any raised hands.
You got, uh, I told you to remind you to put raised hand.
No, that's my mouth.
Okay, so we, um, we'll move on to item number four, which is proclamation regarding Adam Onette winning the national baking competition. Adam and family, we thank you for showing up tonight. Congratulations. Girls, thank you for joining us.
School's off, so they're all. Yes, yeah. They're fine, they're happy.
So let me read this, Adam, and then I'll present you the official document. In an effort not to keep Adam Onette in the dark like a mushroom, the city council has invited Adam and his family here tonight. Whereas Adam Onette, a native of St. John's Mary, Vermont, grew up in a French-Canadian family who cooked food at the center of every gathering. And whereas Adam Onette received an associate's degree in baking and pastry at the New England Culinary Institute of Montpelier in Montpelier. And whereas Adam Onette previously worked in kitchens throughout Vermont, including Smuggler's Notch and Talbella, including and locally Twigs, as well as Bistro de Margaux in Burlington. And whereas Adam Onette, resident of the city of St. Albans with his wife Marissa and two daughters Olivia and Amelia, he has been a culinary instructor at the Northwest Career and Technical Center since 2011 and teaches his students to take every opportunity as they come. And whereas Adam Onette uses real life circumstances to expose his students to actual on-the-job situations. One of these examples occurred when Adam intentionally burned this class's creme brulee to educate them about fire suppression and smoke protection systems, as well as proper evacuation procedures. And whereas Adam Onette presented, represented the U.S. in 2017 at Tophie Festival, that's my French, a bi-annual culinary challenge at the Elise Palace in Terrace. And whereas Adam Onette uses his sense of humor on daily basis and is often heard saying slicker than a frog hair and all cats are gray in the dark. And whereas Adam Onette puts a community first, working with students in and out of the tech kitchen, helping to prepare meals for the St. Albans community and charity events. And whereas Adam Onette was crowned winner of Food Network's Holiday Baking Championship on December 21st, 2021. Now therefore, by the power vested in me as the mayor of St. Albans, I hereby proclaim Tuesday, January 11th, 2022 as Adam Onette Day in the city of St. Albans. Proclaiming this day, January 2022. So, uh, do you want to share a little bit about your experience, Adam?
Yeah, it was, uh, I mean, so I got a phone call from a former student. They gave him my, uh, he gave my name because they were looking for, you know, potential candidates for the show. And of course, I felt as a telemarketer and then they were looking at me. They were trying to reach out on, you know, social media, which I'm really not a part of. So that was their first mistake. And then he called the former student, he's like, no, someone's trying to get in touch with you. So went through the screening process and then it was probably Father's Day. I flew down, uh, you know, and then was there for two and a half weeks. And then it was super great. Had to meet a lot of really interesting people and it's a great time, so. Yeah, so it was a former student at the tech center. Graduated, I don't know, six, seven years ago. So, and he's doing well and, um, so just like full circle. And, um, yeah.
Uh, Adam brings his class to In Good Taste on a yearly event when we have it. We've had it in a couple of years now, but, um, one of the top tasting tables for In Good Taste. It really gives great exposure to the tech center and the students. Personally, I really appreciate everything that you do and you're great to work with. And, um, you know, congratulations on behalf of all of us. We, you know, um, it's, it's great for the, for the region, it's great for the school and you're to be commended for your efforts.
So, thank you so much.
Thank you very much.
We appreciate that.
Yeah. So thanks for coming in. Don't need to say, girl, if you don't have to.
Yeah, we're excited to look, you need to meet the mayor.
I'm sure they'll be up for your highlights.
Thank you guys.
Thank you. Okay, now let's move on to item number five. Perpetuating zoning amendments concerning sites listed on historic registers. Yep, you're up.
Thank you. You, councilors might know that we have some designer view districts in the city, mostly in the commercial court along Main Street. And that makes those properties subject to additional designer view rules having to do with aesthetics and architecture and everything. But our zoning also says that any property that's on the national or state register of historic places also has to be subject to these special designer view rules. I don't know why. But over time, uh, the historic preservation specialists that I've been working with, mostly at the state, have said that, um, the folks who work in historic preservation would prefer we did not do that for a couple of reasons. One being that the success of the historic registers has to do with being able to add sites to the list. And if people think that adding your site to the list is going to automatically make the property subject to increased regulation, property owners sometimes will say, you might listen to that. The other reason being that when a community decides what historic sites are special to it, it really needs to be a process that that community goes through on its own. Especially when you look into the fact that one of the triggers for being included on the historic registers is being 50 years old, a site being 50 years old. Which means that final citing is now an eligible material for inclusion on the national and state registers of historic places. Because they're just supposed to be registered as of what was special about any era of construction. And the city of St. Albans, what matters to us is the architecture from the railroad heyday in the city. And that's kind of where it stops. That's like where we're done. So, there's a third rule. Back when these rules were written in the city, I was not around then. I do not believe the city knew that there was a state register domination back in the eighties that included nearly 50% of all houses in the city of St. Albans. So it turns out, if we were to let this rule continue to exist, probably more than half of all the homes in the city would now be subject to designer view anytime you want to do something like paint your house, fix your porch, change your window. And that's not the legislative intent of our designer view rules. So, um, we are suggesting that the city remove the inclusion in the national and state register of historic places from just a couple of places in the regs that automatically trigger those properties for extra designer view. And just let our designer view districts stand as they are. They already covered the commercial court of the city, where most of the most important historic buildings exist. And, um, and I think that's enough for now. If we want to go through a process someday of figuring out if we want to treat historic homes differently, then we should go through that process. But using the historic registers as a lot of the triggers is not the way to do it. So that's, that's the amendment brought before. And this is just the first rule.
Is this a discussion that the historic committee did not have?
Um, no, I don't, the Historic Preservation Commission, but their conversations have been mostly about educational, uh, opportunities and inventorying opportunities, not regulatory. Historic regulations are not really part of the charge of the historic preservation.
Do we have any questions or tips? This is first reading, we don't need to take a vote at this time. All of you good, all right? Okay, so we will, we will be seeing this again in February?
Yep. Thank you.
You might as well stay there, I guess.
Oh, yes, the annual highway certificate, nothing's changed this year. But this is an official process we need to go through because of the state aid that comes based on the amount of mileage of certain classes of highway in the city.
I move that we approve the annual highway mileage certificate.
Second.
You have a motion in a second. Is there any questions or comments, discussion?
I do want to just mention that this number is important because it drives the formula funding of the debt from how we grants. And you will see that in some other presentations, which have gone up a bit this year.
And those, should we build grants in your life or?
Uh, for instance, like the class two grants were part of how we funded some of the sidewalk work. But it's really about paving your class one roads is the, is one of the big issues. And then there's some of it is totally unrestricted. So we can use it to fund all the works and then it's a group.
Yeah.
These numbers ever change?
Well, they actually, we changed them the past couple of years when we added Code of Court and removed the old press. But yeah, it hasn't changed substantially in a long time.
Okay, we have a motion in second, approval of the, uh, the annual highway mileage certificate. Aye.
Aye.
Any, no, there's hearing none, the, uh, my certificate is approved by council. You got, you got the sign something, Chip?
Yeah, it's trans, stuff we're speaking through from that area there.
Thank you.
You are welcome, thank you. Okay, we're moving on to item number seven, the appointment to the Committee on Belonging, Equity and Inclusion. Basically, we will go through the appointments one at a time. I will make the motion for the individual and the length of the term. I'll be looking for a second and then we'll go on each individual running forward.
Mr. Mayor, before we go, how many people do we have?
We will be appointing eight to the committee.
And, um, we staggered the years the first time around, so they're not all coming to do it exactly the same time, is that correct?
Actually, the guidelines were two and three-year terms. And that's turned out. But yes, it will be half and half.
So in two, in two years, when the first group comes, those will be reduced to two?
That's right. So we're gonna start off, um, we're gonna start off, I am making the motion to approve Eliana Castro to a two-year term. Is there a second?
A second.
Any comments? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
In opposition? Hearing none, and one is appointed to the committee. Next on the list, I make the motion that we appoint Keith Longmore to a three-year term.
Second.
We have a second from Chad. Any questions or comments? Hearing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? Hearing none, Keith Longmore is appointed to the, to the BEI committee for a three-year term. Uh, I make a motion to appoint Leah Christopher to a three-year term on the committee.
Second.
Second by Chad. Any questions or comments? Hearing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? Hearing none, Leah Christopher is appointed to a three-year term on the BEI committee. We're moving on to Clark Sheldon. I make the motion, we appoint Clark Sheldon to a two-year term on the BEI committee. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Chad. Any questions or comments? Hearing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
No opposition, Clark is appointed to a two-year term on the committee. Moving on, I make a motion to appoint Ryer Erickson to a three-year term.
Second.
Second by Chad. Any questions or comments? Hearing none, all those in favor of appointing Ryer to the committee, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? Hearing none, motion passes. We now make a motion, I will make a motion to appoint Marissa Miles to a two-year term on the committee as well. Is there a second?
Second.
Second from Chad. Any questions or comments? Hearing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Uh, any opposition? Hearing none, Marissa is appointed to a two-year term on the BEI committee. Uh, moving on to, uh, I make the motion to appoint Reese Kelly to a two-year term on the BEI committee.
Second.
Second by Chad. Any questions or comments? Hearing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Uh, any opposition? No opposition. Reese is appointed to a two-year term. And the final spot, I make the motion to appoint Preston Fuller to a three-year term on the committee.
Second.
Second by Chad. Any questions or comments? Hearing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? Hearing none, Preston Fuller is appointed to a three-year term on the committee. The committee will be notified by the city manager as to the initial meeting and we will be reaching out down by email, email, uh, to the, to the newly appointed committee. And, uh, we look forward to forming that together here very soon. So, thank you.
Do you think we'll be able to get a meeting in mid-Murray? Perhaps, yeah, it depends on the sort of the schedule of the committee, right? I think I'll, I'll reach out.
Thank you all for, to, thanks to all who participated and submitted that case. We greatly appreciate it. It was a good, good group of folks and we look forward to seeing the, um, the outcomes from that committee. So, we're gonna move on to item number eight, which is a public hearing on the proposed charter amendment for the appointed clerk and treasurer. Dom, do you want to take that?
Sure. So as the public will recall, the city council last meeting decided to put the question to the voters to amend the city charter to move to an appointed city clerk and treasurer. Clerk and treasurer, as envisioned, will be appointed by the city council. It's likely that we may have some overlap between our elected clerk and treasurer, who will be on ballot this March. And we're hopeful that with voter support, the new former government will take effect July 1st of 2022. So to that end, uh, the city council, the city charters, um, uh, propose to be amended as follows. The city council hereby ordains the following amendments. Read the sheet. She has the charter, the city of St. Albans has amended the further amended to change the city clerk position from an elected position to one appointed by the city council. Effective July 1st, 2022, through the amendment of City Charter, Section 12, as follows. Effective July 1st, 2022, the city council shall appoint the city clerk. The city clerk shall perform for the city the same duties devolving by law upon town clerks, except as so far as the same or rendered unnecessary by this charter, and shall collect the same fees therefore be created in the city trade group for the use of the city. The city clerk and treasurer may be one and the same person. Similar language for the city treasurer. Effective July 1st, the city council shall appoint a city treasurer, who shall have all the same powers and be served with the same liabilities as were described by law for town treasurers. The city clerk and treasurer may be one and the same person. Copy of the proposal is available in the city clerk's office and online.
Is there a timeline as to that goes to the voters and that also has to go to the legislature?
Goes to the legislature. We've got a good connection with the local government committee there and we're optimistic we can get it in play by July 1st.
Then my chair has indicated that she is willing to hear it. So charter changes are one of those items that gets a reprieve from the normal bill crossover, don't you think? So that would be, that would be sent and then filled after voter approval.
Correct. Good. Council, any questions on this?
This is basically just asking the city voters if they want to go this way or not. So, you're just asking.
One of the questions that has come up a little bit in the building is, um, personnel matters concerning the city clerk and treasurer. How do we handle that? Should that be addressed in the charter? And, um, the city attorney's advice is to amend the personnel policies just to reflect the general structure that it reports to the city council for scrap process for dealing with appointment of renewable evaluation.
I said it's good, not the first. So there's kind of the examples of it out there for personnel policy.
There's lots of examples out there. A little unusual to do it this way, to be appointed by the city council. So that curries the need to be very clear with the personnel policies.
Does anyone on the Zoom call have any comments you'd like to make relative to the, uh, to this discussion? Raise your hand. Staying done, Dom only has one question. How will we progress now, Curry didn't resign?
Uh, Curry has resigned. Curry is not standing for reelection.
So we would, we could potentially have a gap between March and July?
Potentially, if, if nobody runs, which is probably the simplest way, right? Then, um, we will address the mechanics of how the government continues to function without a treasurer. And, um, we need some legal advice as to whether that anticipated gap between March and July is significant enough to create a vacancy or whether we can continue to function as we have been when Curry's been out using the assistant clerk and treasurer.
And who's gonna run our election for us?
The assistant will run the election. Yeah, so Sarah's gonna run the election. You know, I, we get through, get through the election and take stock of where we are. And we'll take one or two paths depending on the outcome there.
Okay, where's Sarah's, Sarah's not gonna be out of position, right? She's just moving, basically moving off this one down the city hall.
Yeah, Sarah's got about three positions right now. She'd love to be out of there.
Good.
Thank you.
Is there nothing unique from us?
Nope, it's just a public hearing.
Right, great. We're gonna move on to item number nine, which is another public hearing on proposed use of tax incremental finance for site preparation and environmental remediation of development law at 100%.
I'll start out with a little narrative on what's proposed for the property and then Tom's gonna go through some of the details of finances and the financials.
Can I just say, before we get started, so 100 Federal is the vacant lot.
Between Clarence Brown and the.
The current store. On, on the west side of the street.
It's the one you can see the old roundhouse across. Which hopefully won't always be the case. That lot, uh, is a nice redevelopment lot, well located in the city. It would be a typical, typical TIF project. We've done some environmental assessments at the lot and it has some of the types of hazardous issues that we encountered with other brownfield lots in the city. Has some PCBs, some of the urban soil issues, some metals. And basically what's being proposed is a TIF project for environmental remediation and site preparation. It would remove the soils that have to go for hazardous disposal. It would then remove the soils that can't be tapped by a parking lot or building for hazardous disposal. And then the rest would, most of it would just be solved by eventually someday building a parking lot or other impervious surface on the lot to keep everything else in place. That's the sort of project we've done multiple places around the city. The cost of that for the TIF portion for the environmental remediation and the site preparation is around $500,000. $100,000 of which we think would be the soft costs. Really the cost of consultants and the engineers and that sort of thing.
Um, so there's some required disclosures that we have to do as part of all these TIF projects. But just to go through that checklist, as Chip mentioned, it's a half million dollar project. To date, we've incurred 20 and a half million in TIF debt. We've obviously paid a fair amount of that off, but that's our total to date. We're anticipating going to the bond bank for a long-term bond for this project. So our interest rate that we're, we're modeling is on is 3%. That's really high in today's market, but the bond bank typically offers in the summer. So we've got a six-month delay and who knows what's gonna happen. So we'd rather be conservative. So based on that 3%, um, we're looking at a total of about $172,000 in interest over the long term of the project and an annual debt of about $33,608 at 3%. We also have to disclose any fees and the beauty of the bond bank is there are no fees. We went to Wall Street directly, we have underwriting fees. We'd have to get a financial advisor, we'd have a whole bunch of legal fees. That's all wrapped into the bond. So whatever interest rate we pay to the bond bank, a little chunk of that is theirs to keep. It doesn't go to the debt. So we just pay one number and it works separate from the city administratively. Um, we have to disclose if we're doing any inter-fund loans and we have no plans to do that. We've never done that for the TIF. We also have to disclose if we're going to get a short-term life credit, front-term financing. And the answer for that is if the voters approve the project, that gives me legal authority to borrow to also seek short-term debt in that amount. Every time that happens, I take a note of it. Cause there's no cost to it unless we actually borrow the money. So I use the city's pooled cash to our maximum advantage and the other borrow funds is necessary. So, uh, for Congress in Maine, for example, we have 2 and a half million dollars and I think the max we ever actually borrowed for that was a note on a short-term loan. So, but I will intend to get a note for a half million and I'll use funds as needed. Um, the improvements to be financed, Chip went over. Vote Plus, they have the membership loan over. Uh, the other final piece we have to note, as with every TIF project, I'm gonna read this word for word because Deb C. wants us to be absolutely clear on the rules. Voters are hereby notified that the tax increment received by the city from any property tax source is insufficient to pay the principal interest on the debt or other form of district financing in any year for whatever reason, including a decrease in property value. In any year for whatever reason, including a decrease in property value, will repeal the state education property tax source. Unless determined otherwise at the time of such repeal, the city shall remain liable for the full payment of the principal and interest for the term of indebtedness. In short, it's a city general allocation bond. So if the TIF doesn't have the revenues to pay, the city taxpayers will. Which is not our anticipation. This project was in our base financing plan that was approved by DEPC. That's reviewed by a state's economist. And that project financing plan, which is all different projects, cash flow.
We anticipate commercial development that provides an increment in property value of 700,000. That's in the TIF financial plan that was approved. And we have no reason at this time to think that we wouldn't eventually get that much increment, if not more, at this site once the development.
Chip, can you go back to the cleanup discussion? I think when you did the parking lot where the parking garage is, the urban field discussion came into play.
Yeah.
Can you touch on that and what that means? Would that, would that be applicable to this?
What often ha, what do you often find in the soil in a community like ours with all the fires we've had, the different manufacturing uses? You'll find there are just things in the soil that you don't get in a farm field. Some metals, some burned, partially burned wood and things that are toxic until they're fully burned, that sort of thing. And you can't treat that dirt like clean filler. So you have to really treat that dirt like it's garbage. And it can be expensive to send it to a rent fill. So you need to find, you need to characterize the soil, figure out where it can go, and budget for the added cost associated with properly disposing of it. Typically, typically, you know what's in the soil in different spots, how much you have to take out, and where it's going to be hauled to. And just what the cost of that's going to be.
And that, that would be needed down here.
Yeah, we're assuming that'll be needed. There are, there are some more, more hazardous things. There are some PCBs at this site. And those, I believe, are going to have to go, no matter what, to a special hazardous waste facility. And that's one of the ways in which this project's going to benefit us. That, you know, anytime we can take some of these hazardous areas, hazardous things out of the city, we all benefit from it.
What did I, what did I? Should not this say, voters are hereby notified that if the tax increment received by the city is insufficient and so forth?
Yeah, correct. Yes, it should be that way together. That's the type of. And I believe that notice will also get invalidated and then we will be corrected before that happens.
Anyone else have question on this? Anyone on Zoom have any question relative to this?
Just one quick one. It will depend on what goes later, on what happens to the soil. So we know like the parking garage, some of it is able to come back. Or is it pretty much because of what it has been used for in the past, pretty much all of it go?
I don't think it's all going to have to go. We are assuming at this point sort of a slab-on-grade type development. With Congress in Maine, we were digging into the slope. We were building that lower deck of the parking that's underneath the buildings on Maiden Lane. I foresee with this site, we'll have to do some excavation. You know, for footings, the building goes there. Footings will have to go pretty deep, but we won't be cutting into the entire site at any major depth. Which is why it's only a half a million dollar project estimated.
I'm seeing any hands up on the screen, so nothing's needed further from us. Chip?
Not at this time.
Thank you both for the presentation. Item number 10, F.23 budget presentation. Are you going to read that?
Let me just throw that out. I'll try to tease it up in the beginning with some of the thematic elements and then walk you through each department with a little bit more granular detail. We're not doing a super deep dive. And if at any time a topic causes a question, feel free to jump in. We're more streamlined. So close is the proposed F.23 budget. This base budget includes a 4% increase in tax rate.
0.4.
No, 0.4.
I thought you said 4.
Typically, we minimize the rate. I think this is the lowest we've come in quite some time. So 0.4, less than a half a percent. We do have some cost drivers. Reinstating capital items that we took out last year with just police cruisers, contractual wage increases, and our efforts to maintain adequate budgeting for staffing levels, primarily in the police and dispatch departments. And we'll talk a little bit about that in greater detail when we do this, when we give it to those departments. We propose placing two special articles on the warning. The St. Alden's Museum has requested $25,000. And we're proposing that be a freestanding article. And we're proposing an embedded crisis worker in the police department be a freestanding article for $100,000. The embedded crisis worker was proposed by the police advisory board and is an expansion of our existing program by adding additional positions. The current position is funded by the state through agreement with NCSS. This new agreement, the new person, will be funded through municipal funds. I believe that's one of the first times that's occurred in this state of Vermont. This full-time position is designed to offer an immediate response to the overgrowing mental health calls for service that police respond to every day. This allows the PD to have the expert along with them to de-escalate people in crisis in ways officers are not able to with their new training and expertise. It also helps decrease calls for repeat folks who called the police department on non-police matters but willing to speak to a crisis specialist. The combined increase of all three items in the base budget, the crisis worker in the museum, is 2.9%. This budget also proposes use of some of the local option tax revenues that were earmarked to reduce the cost and increase access to recreation program for the disadvantaged and those on fixed incomes. And I've attached the LOT policy in the document. In the policy, the target is 7.5%. And that generates about $60,000 a year. This budget proposes using $50,000 to reduce further increases to recreation fees and creates a $10,000 scholarship fund. At the staff level, we envision allowing folks to self-certify their need for scholarship funds rather than go through an in-depth, means-tested program and figure out where somebody, you know, where do you draw that line? This allows folks to self-certify and prove their case on a one-by-one basis. We can flesh that out a little bit later as we go into the closer to the start of the fiscal year. But this creates the funds for the program to exist.
Quick questions on the way you go on. So would this be, is this embedded crisis worker, is that a replacement to the one we currently have or an addition? So we would have two?
That's a great question. It's an addition.
Okay. And then there's, there might be some flexibilities. So one's working different shifts than the other. So would we make sure to have broader coverage, hourly range than normal? Or is this two-day shift for people?
To some degree. A day shift person is 85, we budget 100. Most cretis don't occur during business hours. But most of the supervision is provided by this person, by folks who work in a traditional office schedule. So you don't want your most junior person out there at night all by themselves. But our intent is to double our crisis capacity. And, you know, we'll figure out with NCSS and their leadership team how best the structure is so we get the best bang for the buck.
Thank you. Sorry.
Thank you. So the cover page summarizes what I just said in terms of tax rate. The median value, median value of the city residents is 200,000. And for the base budget, it's an extra $6. If you add in the museum, it raises it to 9. If you add in the credit worker, it raises it to $38.97. Total impact of $55,000.
Can I share one piece regarding the library? That is, the library was presented. Let's get this out to the library was presented but from an anonymous donor that's.
You mean the museum?
Excuse me, the museum, yes, sorry. The museum was presented with a, with a pitch from an anonymous donor that they would match any increase in the allocation from the city and town. So if we go from $15,000 to $25,000, and the town does the same, that's an increase of 20 between both communities. And this anonymous donor would match that 20. Make people aware of that, that if approved, it could spark some additional contributions to the museum.
So on that note, Mr. Mayor, does this mean that it would increase to $25,000 every year moving forward? Or is this just for one, one time for one year?
I don't know where the budget grew.
Are we talking about our question or the matching funds?
No, our question. So are we saying, hey, voters, would you like to give up every year to $15,000, $25,000? Or is every year the, the museum, they're going to have to come here and put this on the ballot every year?
Let me answer that when we get to the cost center.
Thanks, and I'll turn it back over to you.
All right, let's jump right ahead to the city clerk cost center. Take a look at the table. Got to move through it quickly. If we slow down or you're not sure where.
I want you to increase the lighting, number one. And get you a minor.
You need some, you got magnifiers in those?
I thought they did.
I told Tom to shrink the budget. So, start with the city clerk. Not a lot of action here. We have some anticipated overlap, which has bumped up our salary on item O. But everything else is essentially level funded. So add an additional 8,700 bucks to the city clerk's budget. Next cost center is finance and administration. This is a catch-all for a lot of things in the city. Enjoy your text on line 15. We've got $5,000 for equity committee adjustments and equity initiatives. Line 39, the budget stabilization fund was a general fund appropriation that has now switched over to the local option tax consistent with policy. Similarly, with the redevelopment fund, that was a local option tax responsibility. We received a lot of advocacy for line 41, but at the end, we decided to hold that level funded and we're all initiated at $5,000. And line 51, the HRA cost, have cable reimbursement accounts. You see that that's growing. It's up from 105 previous year. We have an ensuring workforce that has families. Biggest driver in that. But overall, the core city health plan, because they have a deductible health plan paired with the health savings account and the HRA, works very well. And then lastly, the county and regional functions. Line 67, the museum. As a fallback, we're holding 17.5 for the museum in case their article goes down, their 25 goes down. They would still get the 17.5 that they got last year, but wouldn't get both. And typically, our practice is if the voters approve it once, then we would likely include it in the base budget going forward. That's what we did with home health and some others. Text us on the planning and development. On the revenue side, there's a food and object anticipated in revenues as the economy begins to open back up again and some development projects ramp up a little. Line 44 is the city marketing campaign. We zeroed that out last year. We put it back in this year. We've got some momentum behind this. Total operating expenditures then of 286. And if you jump to the next page, line 54A. And every cost center, you'll see it. Line item called net operations. And that's the amount that the taxpayers pay at the end of other budgets. So that's what it costs the city, the land department. Land departments, they don't go long. And about 210,000 for a few years now, they continue to do so. The next cost center is our debt service cost center. Not a lot of new items here, but some of the planned and authorized items are coming online. Line 18 is the debt service on the police building. Now that we're all the way through that, we're doing the full fit-up. It's up from 42 to 65. Line 22, similarly, the dispatch portion of that is up from 18 to 27. And the debt service on the Georgia Tower is up from 10 to 34 if that project used fruition. Probably in future years, we'll start seeing some revenues from the tower versus telecom companies coming back. We're a partial owner in that project. This debt service has been built into the dispatch budgets for a couple of years now. And the last one, line 35, is the local option tax serviced city pool at 340,000.
Tom, you want to talk about CIP stuff for the department now or later?
We can talk about it now.
Any question? Cruisers theoretically need less of them. Is that true?
Yeah.
Because we're not going to the town, right?
In the big picture, we do. Last year, we cut all the cruisers. Last year, we used to pay. When we, we had a wider service area, we covered. We bought, contributed a car and a half every year. And now, now we're buying, in this budget, we're planning to buy one new car, one new cruiser. Because we need to catch up a little bit. And so some of that reduced pressure will begin to show up over time, I think.
And then are we expecting to travel less with the ones that we have? We're not running from one end of town to the other?
Maybe, you know, order the police more, you know, like this. I want to, let's come back to that if we can when we get to the police department. You know, and some of the economies of scale that the pressure to achieve economies of scale and we see how it's structured, you know, so.
There is a, as we're on this, I just want to say there's one nice thing I've seen, smaller trucks going down some of our streets. I know in the past, some of the big trucks or the big things, oops, sorry, had tried to go down the streets. Every once in a while, we'd get a car. And I've seen like regular F-250s or, you know, 2500 or whatever we've had going down some of the smaller streets. And it seems like it's a lot better. So, I appreciate that.
Pass that on. Okay, so I think that's about it for debt service. The only thing that's worth mentioning to propose other than that which we've already criticized. Now we're on the recreation. Big driver in recreation is obviously the pool. In putting this budget together, we spent a great bit of time looking at our estimates and really hand sorting it and trying to figure out what, what it's going to be like to operate. Take a, even an operation that was three months out of the year, around twelve months out of the year, and the utility pressures, operating costs of the dome. So we extrapolated a lot from our three-month season and we took a lot of input from the dome manufacturer and cross consulting the dome's budget. We experimented it from overseas with the voters when they approved the pool. But nonetheless, acknowledging that there's an awful lot of uncertainty, we just don't know how it's going to play out on the expense side and on the utilization side. The model, as you'll recall, is that we try to have it, the debts by, the debts be supported by the LOT and the operating costs primarily be supported by the fees that are charged. And I think we're going to have to do some adaptive management as we get into this on a year-by-year basis. Nonetheless, what we're proposing is our general revenue, our general rent programs are essentially staying the same. Line sixteen, this is the reimbursements that we get from other communities. So if the way this works is a community can enter into an agreement with us where their residents will pay the residency in the city and then the host community will make up the difference accordingly or some kind of payment. And we've broken out the pool from that, we anticipate the non-pool reimbursements to be fifty thousand. So about twenty thousand dollars less than they were when we had the pool locked into it. Talk about the pool in a sec. One of the areas we spent a lot of time on is line thirty. This is the part-time help line item. And there's always tremendous pressure here on our seasonal programs to use lines. Our part-timers are beginning to transition some of that to not a full-time city employee with city benefits and all that, but using the same part-timer again and again so that they get some predictability there, there's some efficiencies there. So what we're proposing, proposing one seventy-five, which is a thirty thousand dollar increase, reflects the actuals. I want to come back to that when we talk about hard act in a few minutes. But we've tried to hold the heart of that budget pretty much the same because the action, as we all, I think, would have known, is to have the pool. Jumping down to the pool cost center, on the revenue side, we're projecting sixty-eight thousand in new revenues. So the bulk of that is St. Albans Town. So that's a sixty-eight thousand dollar expense. Plus, fifty thousand on the earlier page. So their seventy is going up by, was that one twenty? Going up to one twenty. So we will notify the town of that so that they're aware of it. But it's a pretty sizable portion of the budget, the part portion that we anticipate coming in from other communities reimbursing us when their citizens use the pool. And then a lot of the rest of the revenue side is extrapolating our existing programs, very conservatively estimating it. You know, the number of people that are taking swim lessons in the wintertime is different than the number of people that are taking them in the summertime. But just even in the summer months, we'll essentially double the size of the pool. So there's a lot more people that can get in for swim lessons, and while you're doing swim lessons, you can still have the public coming in for daily swim. So that's reflected in the total revenue cost of five hundred and seventy-five thousand. That's what we estimate is going to come in from non-property tax revenue sources. And the expenses line up with that. We think it's going to cost us five hundred and eighty-seven to run the pool on a year-round basis. We think we've captured everything, but I'm sure, you know, like I said, there's a lot of unknowns. The next cost center is hard act. Hard act's, we bring in about sixty thousand dollars in revenues at hard act. But if you jump to the next page, it costs us just seven hundred and eighty thousand to operate hard act. So there's a built-in contribution of twenty grand there from city taxpayers. That's all gotten, a lot, that differential has grown during COVID times when the cleaning, we spend ten grand a year just on cleaning, and the bar's gotten higher. So I think, you know, the time is not, not here yet, but, you know, within the next six months, we need to start having a conversation about, you know, what are some cost recovery options up in hard act? When our office is right there and you've got sixty kids out on the slip, you know, that requires some supervision. You can't just let that happen. But that also causes some increased costs to us. Should all of that be borne by the taxpayers? Or should some of that be shared by folks who are coming from the region to do it? So that's just the glimpse of the horizon. The after-party pressure is about the short-term staffing line item, what I was referencing earlier. Jump into Barlow as a cost center. We've got a new lease at Barlow, as you recall, eighty-five thousand dollars in revenues from that start. We continue to have seventeen or so in expenses, but, you know, there's a sixty thousand dollar add in revenues that helps, is part of what helps us achieve that twenty-four percent budget increase. And then finally, at the bottom of the recreation cost center on lines one seventy-six through seventy-eight, you see our net operations, time division. So taxpayers are making a forty thousand dollar contribution to general rent, a twelve thousand dollar contribution to the pool, and a twenty thousand dollar contribution to hard act. Texas to the police department. Police department is always a big focus area in the budget development process. This year, on the revenue side, there was a ninety thousand dollar adjustment in the SRO program. That program went from two hundred and forty thousand down to a hundred and fifty thousand. And on the expense side, we've talked a lot about the difficulty in finding and retaining police officers. And what we've learned is you just need to budget in some excess here because in a department our size, where you've got thirteen officers on the road, if you go down two or three, and that can happen pretty quick. At a given year, one officer gets hired by the state police, another officer gets COVID or has a medical issue, and a third officer goes off to join, gets called out by the National Guard. Boom, you down three, like that. Now your overtime budget is barely manageable, now your morale issues begin to get affected. We just, we need to have some excess capacity there in order to run the place. So we've added a hundred thousand into the budget to budget more conservatively so that when we have the opportunity to hire an officer, again, you know, the other dynamic there is it takes a year plus to get somebody for the police academy. So if you go down three, you know, and trying to get more than one officer for the police academy is a heavy lift. You could potentially be three years until you're recruited and backed and balanced. So you have to have the ability to onboard somebody if we have the opportunity. And this budget is more sustainable in that sense and allows us to do so. We've shifted with our accounting system a little bit in the way we're tracking these expenses, though. Line thirty-two is a new line item for the night shift, three hundred and fifteen thousand. Which broke the expensive up over the other side of the street. Rest of the budget is essentially unchanged, we jump down to line ninety, net operations. So this year, it's bussed in the city taxpayers, two point five million to run the police department. I think that's a more sustainable police department. I think, you know, last year, we did some things to respond to the loss of the town contract, such as pulling the cruiser out and really ratcheting down staff line items. But that two point five is going to grow by four percent, four or five percent every single year just because of the increases in the cost of doing business and a lot of it is the increase in staff costs, okay? So you look all the way over to the left, column H, that's the last year we had the town staying always. Two thousand nineteen, net actual, I guess it's two thousand twenty-four. You see how much less it's costing us when we have the town staying always. We're saving a half a million dollars when we have those companies to scale. And that's why I keep circling back to this conversation about regional police contracts, okay? The only regional police contract that's built in here is the one we have now, which is high. When you have a couple of extra officers, if we're able to get there, you can do some regional police contracts. And when you just put all your costs in two square miles and those costs go up every year by, on average, five percent, that's a, you know, that's a hard budget to manage, particularly then when you talk about the pressure that we're under to, to find officers. So regional policing is really hard to do. When you look at it on a spreadsheet, the economies of scale will jump off the page. And if we can get to stable staffing, it's something I think we should consider, continue to consider. I know a lot of people have said they like seeing our officers around more, they like seeing them walk, be in the neighborhoods. But this is what it costs, you know, it's two and a half million dollars. And I'm not going to be able to do it a whole lot cheaper. We're right at the staffing levels that the consultants have said that we need. And we've seen what happens if we try to run, run there. So that's the nut, that's, you know, and that just one of the lead parts of our budget. So we're spending two hundred thousand more and it's basically three categories. It's the change in the SRO, it's putting, buying the cruiser back in, and it's a more appropriate and responsible salary budget line item.
And that could go down a hundred if the pool was kind of made.
With voter support, that would add a hundred to it, yeah. The next cost center is dispatch, and it's a relatively similar area there. Dispatch, we were approached by the state of Vermont to assist their public safety answering points or PSEPs by picking up some contractual services, we signed a contract with them for, to add a dispatcher who would work for them at fifty an hour to provide services just working for them. So that's the increase in a hundred and four thousand, line eight. We're not going to quite spend that, so there's a little bit of profit embedded within there, but it provides that redundancy that we need. Many of you did a tour of the dispatch center, now if you want to know, you saw what a frenetic operation that is. Hands down, we get exponentially more calls than any other dispatch center in the state. The business municipal PSEPs and municipal dispatch center in the state. So we have to hold onto our people, and we really need to have two of them on there at all times. Dispatch is, you know, the entire operation is all people. But just very well to be able to pick that up from the state allows us to add a person, gives us that, that balance on the staff inside. And so, you know, there's a hundred and four in revenues and seventy-four in expenses. So it's the right move, it's forward paid for in N-SO. And then everything else is pretty much level funded and status quo. Drop down to net operations, line fifty-five, cost to city St. Albans this year, a hundred and eleven thousand. To operate our dispatch center last year, it cost us a hundred and sixty-five thousand, as proposed, the actual tender. And that's the power of economies of scale, right there, you know? So if we didn't have any dispatch contracts or we didn't have, and we didn't have the PSEPs operation, we'd be spending a half a million bucks a year. And we could have a, we have one dispatcher on, they have a nice quiet little dispatch center, but we'd be paying a department. You know, that's what a lot of the communities do. And this is what we keep trying to replicate on the police side, okay? This is the power of economies of scale, like uptake on the risk and operating, you're having a lot of liability. This operating has a big tail out from insurance and liability perspective. But it's worth it, I think, to be able to gather dispatch services at this cost. Next is animal control, which is embedded in the police budget, not a lot of action there. I know there's always calls to have a animal control officer, those in the city, that's available twenty-four seven. If anyone's interested, they should give us a call. That's a really hard position to fill. We have a great animal patrol officer, but he doesn't have a town.
Can I ask one quick question? Probably should have asked the finance community, but what happens when we do get, you know, animal pull to your, you know, a call to the police about, you know, animals left out at five degrees of day?
So typically, we'll try to call Jim Benson, who, even though he lives out of the area, is fantastic about responding. If he can't come, then our officers respond. But typically, Jim is, like I say, he's fantastic about doing what he can to show up. This guy does pretty good when it comes to a bunch of breath.
Thanks for asking.
For the fire department, on the revenue side, we're seeing an uptick as the world begins to open up a little bit. And hopefully, the Hindus will next just for years, our revenues are up. Not a lot of changes on the expenses. The one thing I would mention on the horizon is we're beginning to ask for concerns about one of our apparatus underneath. One of our trucks is twenty years old, it's beginning to show its age. So I'll be working with Chief Moherin to evaluate our options there. It's not something that's precedent enough to be on the warning this year. But if we get more information, we'll circle back and let you know the plan. Just a weather report, that's an emergency.
How many trucks do we have, big trucks, two? Three big trucks?
Yeah.
Ladder, we have the coin.
We have ladder, coin, and bumper, I think. Now we're on the public works department, public works, kind of Marty's done a great job of raising efficiencies out of... Now, we're on the public works department, public works, kind of Marty's done a great job of raising efficiencies at the department, after right. So, you know, the salaries are up by three percent, but everything else is low funded or down a little bit. Total highway expenditures, line seventy, is at four hundred and thirty-six thousand. If you look back historically where we've been, they continue to hit that mark even with the upward pressure on their supplies and gas and everything, just control the base. On the parks side, we continue to provide some base levels of funding for our parks. It's line seventy-nine, eighty-one. And then line one fifteen, net operations, you know, if you're below a dollar, you know, it's already back again, seven hundred and sixty-seven thousand to run that department. You think of all, all the work that they do, both on the front side and also on the water and sewer side, which is kind of got to work two separate ways. We're getting an awful lot of that for three words, a million dollars. Next is the parking program, and the parking program's become a hiatus. We've got two large parks and facilities. And the downtown core parking garage, just as it was completed, and we were able to be fully leased up, pandemic hit, and our utilization dropped off significantly. You see that in the revenues. We're beginning to see things open up again. And so we think we can, last year, the budget was down at one seventy. This year, we think one fifty-three is more realistic, with our actuals this year. We're out, we're getting to be on track there. Near, near line hours, line thirty-nine, we budgeted capital care for the parking garage. We just need to begin to save some money on that thing. We're already five years in, so hard to believe. And net operations for the parking program, fifty-four thousand. Almost done here at Franklin County, Franklin Rennar Resort and Justice Center, Thomas and Brad Warden. And we threatened this budget to us a little more digestible, focusing on the core program areas. Pretty large budget, you know, all in is eight hundred and fifty thousand dollars. But eight hundred and forty thousand of it comes from others. So we provide fifteen thousand in this budget for the rest of it. One of the things that we're increasingly seeing with the staff and the board is increasingly focusing on the city and the county as a whole, which we'd like to see given where the law just funded all of their contributions of the programs.
What would you say on staffing?
We prefer staff, you know, the department's community director. And we had a good process with the advisory board to select her. And they're often recruited for one or two, but we're going to strengthen this to close it out. And I think the last is just the library. The library was up one and a half percent, and proposed by the library board, and we collect that with them. We'd love to know questions.
I don't know, for a minute. Police department, you mentioned a lot of migration to maybe a state police or whatever. Do we have any immigration from offices or other departments that are already trained, so we all want to train them? Or is it more or less a one-on-one street?
It's a great question, I'd let the chief answer it as well. Yeah, we have a very robust officer recruitment program. We offer up to ten thousand dollar signing bonus. And police officers get free health insurance. And we've been fishing a lot in the Bronx and Palm recently. So, yeah, what we do has been, our wages and benefits are very competitive. The new facility will help a lot. You know, it's a well-traveled path to the local PD, from the local PD to the most state police. And, you know, although there's not too much you can do about that. But what, you know, it's another reason why, you know, we're one of the bigger departments in the state and in order to attract and keep officers, you've got to offer special details, you've got to be big enough that it's not just the same old thing every time. And you have to create some career paths for folks to have diversity of assignments. And so the school goes on, officer is important, the detective work that we do is important. We have a partnership now with Homeland Security Investigative Unit, does do any integration work. But all they do is financial fraud, trafficking, and all just classic detective work that's coming out of Homeland Security. We're funding that, costs us about a hundred grand, but we're anticipating getting fifty thousand dollars back in asset forfeiture. So there's a fifty thousand dollar investment there. But a big reason that we're doing this is to create the career opportunities and the career ladders for younger officers so that you don't have to go to a bigger department, you can stay here and have some upward, upper mobility.
So, Chief, I think, I mean, I think Donald, Mr. Cloud, they're inside of me. It is hard to entice officers to come to any department from their own department unless they have a reason to leave. So you have to think about that when you're looking at officers outside, why are they leaving the department? If they are coming to you, then you have to have something to entice them, so we have all the right things to entice them. One of our latest hires was from Burlington, he left there after retirement though. So he had a real good reason to leave, he came here, this is his hometown, he grew up here, he actually started his police department career here, then left here to Burlington for exactly what Mr. Cloud said, was more opportunities for the bigger department. And he came back here, he lives here again, he wants to do, in probably five years here, so he, quite honestly, can gather another retirement. It's a great opportunity. But now we have to concentrate on getting the new people that come on, keeping them here by having these extra positions and these different roads or paths within a department. Otherwise, if you're pushing, what we call pushing a cruiser your whole career, it doesn't offer a lot for you. And we have to have those other avenues. You're always going to lose the people in the state police. The reason they do that is because they have a lot more avenues. And the bigger thing is they can move to different parts of the state, which we can't offer. And that's usually the reason you lose them. We just lost two to that in the last six months. And that, that we can't prevent. So we have to think in-house what we can do to keep them and retain them. Quite honestly, I would love to get people like grew up in St. Albans and have them on the payroll. The, one of the two, not kind of Burlington gentlemen, we have another way to be hired, and he is from St. Albans. And we have a third here now that is currently deployed, that's been parish patrol for a long time, he would like to come here, which would be great. So those would be homegrown, know everybody in town already, it'd be perfect. So we're trying to build those relationships young, keep them here, make them pass, so they'll want to stay. But we would take some, we would take some outside police department people as well. It's a lot cheaper and quicker, so. Again, we have to entice them with the opportunities.
Any questions on the police portion?
I got a question, well, I used to question, well, a question in common. Something in common is that it was a bummer to see there's no park patrol. We'll see how that works, I don't think it worked out very well last summer. It's just nice having someone there that kids can talk to and doesn't seem very threatening. You need a whole shirt carried around, a potato or something, I don't know, notebook or something, I don't know. But we'll see, bring the cameras, maybe that'll work. And then the other thing is, where in this budget is the money that was allocated to Home Park when we passed the budget?
It's in a nice safe reserve account, we're not...
So no plans on spending it?
Well, yeah, lots of plans on spending it.
Yeah, but nothing this coming summer, there's no plans on...
We, there's some design concepts, there've been several iterations of that that are working their way from the staff level through the parks commission on their way to the council. We've been trying to get some, you know, none of them are cheap, right? So, you know, it's, it's hard to find a nice little two hundred and fifty thousand dollar improvement to the park. Most of them have three more zeros on them, right? So, so we've been trying to get the project that's meaningful to the park and also probably trying to get grab months in additional revenues, like for land and water conservation funds reauthorized. So we've been trying to put that package together strong enough that we could bring it to the council for consideration, so.
There's definitely like the pavilion or gazebo, whatever you want to call it. You know, that would be great in Home Park. That's currently at the old pool. I don't know if that has any plans on moving up or not. And then the other thing, just like some little maintenance things, I'm sure the Barlow Street Park's the same, you know, just picnic tables and stuff, a lot of them got destroyed last year. So something a little more permanent that's harder to move around and fantastic as well, yeah, you know. Well, sometimes a lot of things make a big difference.
Listen back, those are the operating budget, we don't need to spend the two fifty on that, you know. You know, you and I talked about some of the ideas, and you've been helpful in redirecting us on some. You know, I just, I feel like what we sold was always a meaningful improvement to that park, right? And we just haven't quite figured out a plan yet to move forward. But none of that's being spent.
Yeah, a public bathroom would be fantastic, I mean, that's, that's a big one. Like that's the, all the issues we have with the bathroom down there. Of course, it hasn't been open in the last two years, but before that, just every time someone flushes, just because of the slope in the ground, it's so shallow, it doesn't, just doesn't go to the set bigger most. So if there's a way we could get a bathroom in there, that would probably be fantastic.
To the extent that you'd rather see a bird in the hand sooner rather than later, maybe we should talk further. I might have been thinking too grandiose, like, you know, if you'd rather see that two fifty deployed instead of, you know...
If we think we can get money some other way, that's, and we could put it, put a lot of little nuggets and get a big nugget, that's absolutely fantastic, I'd rather do that. But at the same time, is I don't want to hold on to it for ten years, hoping for something, and then everything else is just going up and up and up in price, and you're just watching your scale go down and down and down. So I see there's half the medium in there somewhere.
Yeah, I completely agree, yeah.
That was my comment and question.
And so, you know, we're not, we're not rolling out to us something next summer, we're just not asking for any money in this budget, so.
I just, I can ask you one more, I want to say wholly smoked, point four percent. I mean, I don't know how much everyone else has seen the price of gas and everything else go up. Kudos to Dom, you and your team and the finance committee for seeing a point four percent. That's super impressive. I thought, when you said four percent originally, that's what I thought it was going to be. So I'd much appreciate it.
I would echo that saying, so I think it's great that the finance committee, that was Tim, Mike, and Bob participated along with their team, so I think it's, you know, are we going to have another presentation on this?
We can have a panel discussion.
I, you know, I talk on this every year, I think it's important to have someone from the supervisory team to talk about their budget at the same time as this and look at what that combined impact is to our voters. I think, I think that gets lost in the mix a lot when voters go in. And we, because we're the ones out on the, in the forefront, I think we take the, the city takes a knee for the increase in tax. And this is the prime example of that, for the most part, it's not, it's not everyone, it's the education budget. I would agree with Chad on the bathroom, I think that's something that public works could do if they had the time. But it would make a huge difference for families down there to have that open during the summer. And that's just one, the starting point, but I think, I think that's something that we really should want to have.
Unfortunately, I just, unfortunately, now I don't think it's a cheap fix. So I think, I think there has to be some, you have to add some elevation to the toilet, so, you know, you're going to have to build some kind of ramp up two or three feet. And so I, it's basically a whole new bathroom, so I don't think it's an easy, or it's a common person, I don't know. They just don't think it's easy for everybody.
I have a question on the library, so they have five cents on the, on the budget, right?
I should check the language, but my regulation is, as it says, something to the effect that the council shall forward to the voters what the trustees recommend, not to exceed five cents on the grand list. That's how it is.
Right, for the library?
Yes.
That's correct, and something I did point out to Mary Pat is, we are hoping at that five cents almost exactly.
That was going to be my question, what happens if they go, if their budget goes over the five cents?
I believe that the five cents is in our charter, so...
So we, we would fund them up to that level, and then anything above that's their responsibility?
I think that's a dumb question, better than me.
Yeah, you know, let me, let me do a deeper dive, deeper dive on the charter language and see, you know, I think, you know, there's some, there's some regional considerations there too, between the cities and town, their budget, I mean, cities that...
Two sixty, town's at one sixty.
Two sixty, town's at one sixty, yeah. And I believe...
Not one sixty, it's two and a half, is that, I believe, two and a half cents in the town's grand list?
The town has a resolution, it has a voter approval article for capital measures of two point five, which makes some sense.
Is their grand list is your own?
Because their grand list is twice the size of ours, right? But you'd think that those numbers would be more even then, right? And so there might be some capacity in one of those rates. You know, one sixty might not be at two point five, it doesn't look to me like that. Two sixty is here in our cap, and one sixty isn't here in our cap. But there's an awful lot to analyze there, I think it's more of a FY twenty-four question than FY twenty-three question. Opportunity for, Tim's not here, but Mike and Bob to comment on the budget?
I don't have, I don't have any more comments other than what I've said. And I agree that Dom and the staff has put together a really good budget. The finance committee didn't have any problem recommending it to a pool on Wednesday of last week, so I think it's well done.
Yeah, I would echo those sentiments, it was a pretty easy budget to approve. I would say that we're getting an awful lot for a point four percent increase in terms of services and road planning and public safety and, you know, we just, we have incredible staff and Don, your relationships. I think we're very lucky to have what we have here in the city of St. Albans and to get it because we have leadership that's thought about economies of scale. And we all and the people before us have made some investments that have set us up pretty well. I would tell people, I think actually some of the figures around that meeting with things like the pool, I mean, we all know exactly what they're going to be, some of them seem kind of conservative actually, based on the excitement I think people are going to have about using that facility. And so it'll be really interesting to see how those numbers shape up, because I have a feeling, you know, that pools, there's going to be a lot of money coming in through the door there to support the program in there. That's definitely one of the jewels of this budget.
Thank you, Mike, and I just want to reinforce that point that you made. Just for the voters to remember that this is, the pool exists that, it's a, it's a projection. And until we get a year under a gun and get a feel for it, we really don't know what the cost is. So the request, the request is that folks need to be considerate and flexible when it comes to the pool budget. It may be less, it may be more, but, uh, we won't know until that number appears on the ballot, so. Are there any public comments on the budget? Anyone on the Zoom call, raise your hand. Not seeing any, so we will move, um, on, on here, we have proposals of amendment. Dom, I'm not familiar with that.
If anybody wanted to.
Oh, anything would be great.
We discourage proposals from the floor, I think. And my other job is my job to make sure those don't happen.
I move that we drive the city energy and finalize the budget very quickly or inclusion on town meeting.
I have a motion from Chad, seconded by Mike. Any further discussion or comments from the council? Are you good?
I'm good.
Anyone, uh, so we're motion in a second. All of you, say aye.
Aye.
And the opposition? Hearing none, as Dom, you have been, uh, directed to finalize the budget. The article for the elect town meeting, then. Okay. Moving on to item number 11 on the agenda, which is, um, business recruitment agreements, uh, starting with you, Dom, and, uh, 84 North Main.
Thank you. This is, uh, three agreements, uh, that were being proposed this evening. They're part of our, um, business improvement, uh, efforts. And we've all discussed the fact that, um, one of the, um, most, uh, talked about matters amongst, uh, the proverbial person on the street is, um, what are you gonna do about the vacant storefronts? These three agreements are a direct response to that question. It's, uh, something that, um, I think we've been grappling with for the last 10 years. It's what do you do to fill vacant storefronts? Um, with these agreements, we've taken some of the strategies that we've learned on the development side of the private partnerships, sharing the risk, uh, participating in, uh, the market, uh, and tilting, uh, the, the offer and the proposition so strongly, um, so that you get folks to say yes. And that's working the development side, uh, eager to, um, to bring forward these, uh, three different, uh, projects, which, um, seem to be showing some traction on the retail side. Uh, the first is a, um, proposal at 84 North Main for, uh, Hangry the Donut Bar. Hangry Donut is operated by Erica and Edward, um, McLean. And, uh, I'll read this, uh, resolution, cause I think it, um, gives you a sense of where we're coming from. Uh, all three of these, we won't re-raise each time, please. Uh, where the city, whereas the city of St. Albans is actively recruiting for new retail businesses to locate in the designated downtown and the city's qualified census tract. Whereas the city is particularly interested in independent retailers who share the city's vision for new place-based retail. Whereas the global pandemic has caused a disproportionate impact on business development efforts. And whereas the city's business recruitment efforts are hindered by the need to improve store properties to be attractive and competitive to its marketplace. Whereas those improvements are too great to be absorbed by the tangent of property owner. And whereas ARCA funds provide infusion of resources to help turn the tide on the pandemic, address its economic fallout and lay the foundation for a strong and equitable recovery. And whereas the city may choose to augment ARCA funds, the city's redevelopment fund. Now therefore, the city of St. Albans and Edward, uh, Erica and Edward McLean hereby agree as follows. So this deal is a five-year lease with the Hangry Donut. They'll sign a five-year lease. We'll cover the first 5,050% thereafter towards signing the agreements. We'll provide some rental assistance, uh, for the first few years of, of the lease. From now until April, um, we'll pay the rent and then starting on April 1st, it will decline from 75, 50 to 25% over three years. We'll provide a startup loan of 50,000, uh, and half repaid upon signing the agreement in the balance of the opening. And we'll also use our access, uh, to very competitive borrowing rates, expenses, um, to the tenants, for additional 50,000 revolving loan funds, uh, at 2% for five years. There's a separate agreement that we'll make with the, uh, broccoli owner, uh, of, uh, 84 Main. Cover some of the improvements, uh, and we will provide parking in the city hall parking lot, uh, for, uh, the food truck and the women operators, uh, and the others. So, uh, council should admire with the agreement, um, and, uh, welcome to the discussion. Ask for a motion, go through.
So it's not for discussion and vote on the agenda, is that okay?
Well, it's up on the top.
Oh, top, okay.
Yeah, it's okay.
So I, I move that we approve the three. Do we do all three at the same time or just do angry first?
Let's do, let's do them separately.
Okay. I move that we approve the proposal for Hangry Donut shop.
Second.
We have a motion in a second for the Hangry Donut, uh, proposal. Are there any, um, comments from the council?
I guess, I would just say, you know, we, we looked at these, I'd say we're being negotiated, obviously, um, and so we're not making a snap decision tonight, but the thing we hear the most, and I think all of us mentioned this as we were looking at these, is from our constituents is that we want those storefronts filled. We want a downtown that's worthy of the investment that we've made. And we all know how Main Street versus box stores versus the internet, uh, puts us at a market disadvantage. It's hard to run a retail business. I ran one downtown here for several years and, um, these are, this proposal, and when I think about Hangry Donut, you know, that's an, uh, up and coming business that, that is getting lots of statewide attention. It's, you know, obviously, uh, a great product and it's the kind of thing that we want to attract here. And putting together a package like this that makes it possible to get that person to say, yes, I will move to downtown St. Albans, I'm not gonna go somewhere else. It's just gonna help us build a stronger downtown. And that's why I support us getting in the business of getting these businesses to locate here in our downtown.
Thank you, Mike. I think what I would add to that also is that we're gonna hear about it, uh, in another proposal as well, is that the, the businesses that we're working with are not only looking at just the retail aspect and the walk-in traffic, but this one and, uh, the ones that follow talk about doing business out the, out the back door where they, uh, they market their product to other entities that will be, uh, purchased in other locations. So you have a wholesale aspect and you have a retail aspect. And, uh, so you have two strings of income that are gonna make a difference for the business. They're not just dependent on that walk-in traffic. They're dependent on two strings and I think that makes them that much more viable for a downtown owner. So, I think that's, I think that's key to the, to the discussion as well. So we have a motion in a second. All those in favor of the proposals, say aye.
Aye.
And the opposition? Hearing none, uh, proposal for the Hangry Donut, uh, has been approved. We'll move on to, um, 82 North Main.
Thank you. So the other side of that, though, is, uh, 82 North Main. Uh, and, um, it's a report that, um, we've reached agreement with Bootlegger Bikes to open a bike shop at 82 North Main. Bootlegger is owned and operated by two gentlemen, Matt Nicholas and Josh Schneider. Josh Schneider, uh, lives here in Franklin County, is really active, uh, with, uh, St. Albans Skating Association. And, you know, ever since, uh, the last 14 years of our tenure, we've been talking about getting a bike shop. So I'm pleased to report that Bootlegger is ready to sign a five-year lease. Very similar incentive package, uh, with a signing and homage, um, package of five grand and rental assistance, uh, startup loan, uh, revolving loan funds, uh, as needed, to help them build up their inventory, uh, and cover their cash flow with parking in back, uh, city hall. You know, whereas, um, uh, the Hangry Donut has a, uh, a wholesale retail combination. I think Bootlegger's, one of their secrets of success will be, it's not just retail sales, but it's also service. And so, uh, you know, bike shops are, you know, a classic downtown use, uh, tried and true. And it's that service element that keeps the bike shop, uh, up and running. So, delighted to bring this forth, yeah.
I move that we approve the proposal for Bootlegger Bikes.
Second.
Motion from Chad, seconded by, uh, Mike. Any other comments?
I just want to say it's gonna be nice to have another bike shop, really bike shop on Main Street, not a little kid, so. It's nice to have another bike shop.
Mics are coming back. I mean, you know, we've got the rail trail network that we're connected to here is just getting bigger as the Memorial Valley Rail Trail Project gets created. It's just, the synergies all make sense, it's great.
Now, was that the bike shop you referred to, was that Western Auto?
Ah, I saw.
It was 40 years ago.
Can you, uh, and already established business as well? Can you, can you touch on that a little bit?
Yeah, yeah. The, uh, whereas the Hangry Donut is operating out of a food truck and I approached these guys and said, let me see if I can talk to him for a short while. Um, these guys have been, uh, operating a very successful business out in, uh, Jeffersonville, town of Cambridge, uh, for any number of years. And, um, they have been eyeing St. Albans for a while and, um, they actually made contact with us first. We've been talking about this for, uh, probably three years, uh, and everything else, the downtown network got away. And, and, uh, but, uh, you know, the, this whole business of business development is not risk, correct? And so, um, you know, these guys being in the business and being up and running, they know what they're getting into. They go in, eyes, eyes wide open.
Have they got a keep a presence in Jeffersonville also?
Yes, yeah, we have two stores.
I think you make a, a key point, Dom, in that a lot of people should, should understand that, business development is not an overnight activity. A lot of courting, a lot of discussions, a lot of back and forth, um, to get to the, to get all of these to a point of fruition is not an easy task. So, uh, thanks, thank you for your efforts on that.
Well, I, you know, I have to say, the, um, it's been a pleasure to buy some new bikes for my family and eat a bunch of donuts.
Now, in which order do you, do you have a donut person and exercise them on?
Hopefully, uh, the donuts will be offset a little bit. Okay, let's move, uh, so we have a motion in a second. All those, uh, approval of the Bootlegger for proposal, say aye.
Aye.
And the opposition? Hearing none, uh, the resolution for 82 Main and Bootlegger has been approved. Moving on to 54 North Main.
Uh, 54 North Main, uh, this is another, um, local business who's seeking to take their operation to the next level. This is, um, a partnership with, uh, Nurish. Nurish is presently on 7th Street and, um, approached us, um, uh, maybe nine months or so ago about, um, um, looking for more space. And they're, uh, they're similarly have a wholesale retail combination and they were outgrowing their space and they, they wanted to increase their commitment to St. Albans. And so we've put together this package, uh, similarly it's a five-year lease. Nurish is putting, putting in, um, about, uh, two and a quarter in, uh, equipment, um, investment and borrowing, uh, on their business equipment. But, uh, shortfall here is really the, uh, the fit-up for the building. So, uh, we're gonna contribute 165,000, uh, towards the hood, uh, of the building. And, um, we've figured out a mechanism to get some of that, those funds back, um, with the, uh, property owner, we have a building under contract, so we'll be investing in buildings that we own. And this allows, uh, that first floor use, it has a lot of potential as a, as a wholesale retail space, but hadn't been a restaurant, uh, ever. And so this repositions the buildings in the market and allows for their growth industry. And, um, Nurish reports, uh, their wholesale business in particular is just ground market investors.
I'll move that we approve, um, the deal for, the deal with 54 North Main with Nurish as presented.
Second.
We have a motion from Chad, seconded by Mike to approve the, uh, 54, um, North Main agreement. Any other comments or thoughts?
Tom, the, the look on the front of the building is going to remain, correct?
The historic facade will remain, uh, and, um, we have not plans, uh, to take away the, the vaults from the building or, uh, change, uh, the overall picture of the building.
Perfect, thank you.
Got some other questions or comments? Hearing none, all those in favor of the, uh, 54 Main proposal resolution, um, say aye.
Aye.
And the opposition? Hearing none, uh, Don, uh, I think it's okay to move forward on that as well?
Right.
Move on to item number 12, which is the mayor's report. First thing up is, uh, the development review board appointment. Few of my trip card and interviews, uh, apply these appointments, so we'll cover these now. First one is an appointment to the development review board, um, for the alternate position, which is currently open. And the individual we spoke to was Becky Mannheim. So I would, um, I would move we approve, uh, Becky for a three-year term as the alternate on the development review board.
I'll second that, it's just clarifying 1231, 2001, board of review.
We have a motion in a second to appoint Becky Mannheim to the development review board alternate seat. Any questions or comments? Hearing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And the opposition? Hearing none, I'll shift 1974 to the alternate seat. We're moving on to the downtown board appointment. Uh, we'll take one, so we'll take that individually and, uh, all of these are for three-year terms. First one, I would make the motion to appoint Valdemar Garabe to the downtown board for a three-year term.
Second.
We have a second from Chad. Any questions or comments?
Are these all full seats or are you, these, oh, these are all full?
We have five full seats open.
Perfect, thank you.
So, all those in favor of, uh, Valdemar, say aye.
Aye.
And the opposition? Hearing none, Valdemar is appointed. Next on the list is, uh, I motion that we approve David Gliven for a three-year term on the downtown board as well.
Second.
Seconded by Chad. Any questions or comments on this? Hearing none, all those in favor of appointing David for a three-year term on the, uh, the downtown board, say aye.
Aye.
And the opposition? David is appointed. Next on the list is Emily Richards for a three-year term on the downtown board appointment. I make that motion.
Second.
Seconded by Chad. Any questions or comments? Hearing none, uh, all those in favor of appointing Emily to the downtown board for a three-year term, say aye.
Aye.
And the opposition? Hearing none, Emily is appointed. Mary Pat Larrity, um, I make the motion to appoint Mary Pat for a three-year term on the downtown board. And, um, looking for a second.
Second.
Second from Chad. Any questions or comments? Sounds like I'm recording here. Hearing none, all those in favor of Mary Pat being appointed to the downtown board, say aye.
Aye.
And the opposition? Hearing none, Mary Pat is appointed. Lastly, to the downtown board, uh, I make the motion to appoint Jeremy Perez. Lastly, for the downtown board, I make a motion to appoint Jeremy Perez to a full seat, right?
That's correct.
To a full seat for a three-year term. Looking for a second.
Second.
One second from Chad. Any questions or comments? Hearing none. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And no opposition, so Jeremy is appointed to a three-year term on the downtown board. Now we're going to move on to the planning commission appointments. We're going to start off with, I would entertain, or I will make a motion, these once again are three-year terms. I would make a motion for Stan Berdine to be appointed to the planning commission. Looking for a second. Hearing none. We will move on in a little second. So all the motion guys, moving on to Amy Burleson. I make the motion to appoint Amy Burleson to a three-year term on the planning commission. Looking for a second.
Second.
Seconded by Chad. Any questions or comments on Amy? We're hearing Amy. Hearing none. All those in favor of appointing Amy Burleson to the planning commission for another three-year term, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? Hearing none. Amy appointed to the planning commission. And last on this list is, I would entertain a motion to appoint Lauren Dees Erickson to the planning commission for another three-year term.
I'll make that motion.
So we have a motion and a second from Chad.
That's for a full seat.
Are you asking or telling?
Yeah, I'm asking.
It is for a full seat now.
Okay, yeah.
So you asked for a motion, Mr. Mayor. You didn't mean a motion. So I mean the motion.
Exactly.
I just thought it was getting a little repetitive.
No doubt about that. What do I do next, Chad? Any comments or, any comments or questions? Hearing none. All those in favor of appointing Lauren to the planning commission for a three-year term, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? Hearing none. Lauren Dees Erickson is appointed to the planning commission for another three years. I would, I would like to thank all of those individuals for submitting their names and being willing to participate in city government. You know, I'm always impressed with the fact that for the most part, we do not have a participation issue. We have many people willing to serve and being a part of the conversation within the city of St. Albans. For all of them, I say thank you.
Mr. Mayor, just for a second. We went through a lot of people today and I don't think we named two people the same for anyone board, which is very drastically different than it was 15 years ago. Many of the people that served on the city council served on a lot of boards as well. So it's just a testament to our residents stepping out and wanting to be a part of the change and getting their input. So I'll second that. Much appreciated.
Thank you, Chad. Let's go around on council reports. Let me just jump in on mine. Mine is once again, a thank you for the co-op and air team for the tractor parade. It was excellent. Thank you for the last night events as well. You know, a lot of good things are happening and continue to happen in the city and I'm looking forward to the spring and summer months with everything going on. So, Mike, why don't we start with you?
Thank you very much. I don't have a lot to report. I want to say thanks to Public Works for picking up Christmas trees. I think they're still doing that through Friday for folks who still have theirs like we did this weekend. It was nice to have that picked up and not have to worry about it. So thanks to them for that. It was, the last night celebrations were great and just, I feel like our communities, you know, people have been lighting up their houses all over the neighborhoods and it just felt good during this dark time to have some of that cheer for the holidays. So thanks to everybody who was willing to get out there and try to chase and light up your household with.
Thank you, Mike. Bob?
Ward five, I don't have anything to report. Things are pretty quiet right now in Ward five, so I don't know if I need to add.
Marie?
Ward three is pretty quiet as well. But I did want to mention that, that the festival of trees was, was a nice event that we had during city hall and it was super well-intended. The entertainment was great, so that was nice. And also I appreciate the railroad fixing the fallen rail signal today that I guess was a result of an accident on early Saturday morning. So didn't have that happen.
That was the happiest looking crew I've ever seen.
Yeah.
They were really happy looking.
Is that just a car rain anywhere?
Yeah.
Coming from the other direction?
I think so, yeah.
Coming from the left?
It'd be quite a lot of rain.
Okay, thank you, Marie. Chad?
All I have, all I have, I have a question. Do we know when our next fireworks celebration is going to be? I assume it's the winter carnival. Do we have a date?
I'm not sure, but if there is for the winter carnival, it'll probably be at heart out.
Okay, perfect. Okay. That's all we got.
Okay, thanks, Chad. Dom, you got anything to share about?
I don't know how we do number 14 without Tim. One more time. I want to say we missed Jim last few months and we do want him to get better, so hoping for his recovery and he can join us again here soon. So I will, I will intend, I will motion that we approve check one as called 3121.
I'll second.
Seconded by Marie. Any question on Ward? Any comments? Hearing none. All of the favor of approving the ward for 1231, 21, say aye.
Aye.
Any water? Any opposition? Well, the issue of Ward 8 is local to adjourn from Chad. I need one, but. So you seconded his adjournment?
Sure.
Thank you all for a lot of stuff. Dom, thanks for all your work on both of us in the business improvement. I'd like to thank our residents are happy with the direction we're headed and the budget we're presenting. Thank you all. Thank you on anyone who are joining us on Zoom. Appreciate you participating and we hope you all have a good rest in January. Stay warm tomorrow. Thank you all.